Minor, minor.
It's early. Thank you. So yeah, and it figures it, it does an estimator of change, percentage of change for each of the clap, each of the taxing authorities, your school, your county and your city, if you happen to live in a city. If you don't, that area will be zeros if you live in the un- uh, unincorporated areas of the county. So that's part of what's available out on the Department of Management.
So if you don't mind sharing, I guess, what your taxes?
Mine, and I live in the, I live in Dennison. Um, so my school, my percentage of increase for my school taxes is three point seven nine. The county is four point five six and for the city of Dennison is five point seven nine.
That's your increased percentage?
Increase for the proposed, for what's being proposed for their um, levies currently. Cause they could change, they could go down at their actual budget hearing. And that's all that's allowable at that budget hearing is whatever is posted for the budget hearing. Those levies can go down, they cannot go up at that point.
Right. But your est- the question be your estimate four percent higher. Then it also takes an evaluation, not just.
Right, it's not just the levy, it's not the levy, it's the dollars created by those levies. Yep, exactly.
So does it, does that spell that out for me?
We were told that that was what was confusing to people, that they didn't understand that the increase was a levy or evaluation increase.
Right, it explains it, just like on the letter, so I brought my letters in. And it explains, it shows way off to the right, it shows a proposed rate. And it shows the current rate, so you can see that those levy rates went down. And that's specifically the school. Same for the county, they both went down for countywide and rural. They went, the rates, levy rates went down.
So I think that's where people get confused, they say, I have four and a half percent increase, you raised my taxes. Well, no, we didn't, our levies went down, evaluations went up.
Right. Same for city, they went down. And also know for residential property that the rollback went down. And for commercial, for the first hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it is also, um, it uses the residential rollback. And that rollback is down to like forty six. And it was in the fifties last year. So they have adjusted the rollback to account for all the, cause I think statewide, um, a big increase in valuations has happened.
Yeah, I still think, you know, this is COVID.
What was our what?
Our valuation and then it got rolled back. Do you remember?
I don't, no, I'm sorry, I don't. Yeah, I don't know.
That was a lot of numbers ago.
Yeah, for sure. For sure.
I don't know, emotionally, I don't know any evaluations.
Bonnie, you have questions or, or these guys here too?
Free money during COVID, when houses were on the market for two hundred dollars and they were bringing over asking price, just coming up ahead of it.
Those days are over.
Yeah, the real estate market is definitely.
Definitely seeing the.
Inter-trades are fine.
Inter-trades have changed that, you're right.
Hyper crisis fix, hyper crisis, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, they do.
Does anybody have questions?
Cindy has her hand up.
Cindy, Cindy.
Good morning, um, I had a little hard time getting in today, so I missed what Terry was saying in the first part. What are the levy rates? And I did not get my letter, which I'm very disappointed in that it would've been nice to talk intelligently here. But what are, what are the revolates rates for the county rural? What are they at currently and proposed, cause that should be the same in every letter, correct?
Right, so currently, um, so countywide, the current rate is five point zero one seven five one. And the proposed rate for the, for countywide is four point nine zero eight four zero. And then the, the, I've got the rule number two, Cindy.
Okay.
The, for the rule is four point zero five currently. And then the proposed rural is four point zero three four nine five.
And can you explain to me, I'm sorry, I, I really should know more about this, but I don't. What's the difference between the county and the county rural?
County is general, general, sorry Kyle, go ahead.
Oh Cindy, the, the countywide is their general, general basic and, and general supplemental. And then the rural is just, the rural funds, which is just the, for unincorporated people in the county, the, the percentage they pay. Or services that are always specific to the rural areas. And the general fund covers.
Cities, basically.
For services that are specific to everybody in the county.
Okay, cause I'm thinking of mine.
And that's established, but a lot of that's established by Iowa code, I mean, there's only certain things that you can put in rural, rural basic. You charge and so on and so forth.
The rural people actually pay both of those. Because the people, so people that live in an incorporated area, like, so I live in Dennison. I pay city taxes, so I don't pay that, the rural portion.
Rural basic.
Of the county's tax. I only paid the general portion.
Got it, okay. And then everybody pays the schools, right?
Everybody in rural subs just, just the farm.
Everybody pays the school, the district that they are, yeah, Cindy.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Cindy, the prime principle of that would be like, everybody pays to be able to go into the treasurer's office and get a license. We pulled extra funds out of rural basic to go into the extra white rock for our county roads. That's, that makes sense.
That does make sense. So then the, so the levies are going down, but our assessments went up. So is it just kind of equal itself out? Or not?
It probably depends on the district you live in.
Okay, so if I wanted to figure my own taxes out, I would just take this levy rate times my assessed value. That, um, that letter that we got a while back, we get it every year.
So the, in the Department of Management's website, if you go to their homepage, there is an area, um, that is called School, County and City Budget Year Statement of Taxpayers. And within there, there is a link to a area where you can calculate your taxes.
Oh, cool, okay.
Yeah, so if there's any of those numbers that you need from us, please call my office and I can help you with that. Of course, wait till later this morning, cause I'll be in here for a while, but.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, I just didn't understand exactly how that all worked, cause I, if your levies are going down, I would think our taxes would start going down. But it just depends on that assessed value.
The values went up really large, but the rollback for residential, um, all decreased to help to balance that out. So there is a bit of a balance in play, but, um, you're not gonna, it's not relevant in budgets yet. It'll be relevant on your tax bill.
Relevant in budgets. So you're still budgeting to, what are you budgeting to? Last year's amounts or how do you figure out?
Oh, evaluations. So it'd be the twenty twenty-three assessment is what we're budgeting to.
Cause I know you're going through those topics already.
Payable in twenty-four and twenty-five. That's how that works.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So a bit confusing, there's no doubt about it, right? Sometimes.
Can only budget off what you know, not what you expect, it's kind of how I look at it.
Yeah.
Steve?
Questions?
No worries, we're here for it.
We're here from up here.
You got your letter, so.
Oh, yeah.
We don't know anything about taxes, we can't help them.
You're one of the lucky ones.
You're not gonna get to all of it.
Have a seat, have a seat.
My name's Steve Puman, I live in the western part of the county. Am I being, am I on TV and being taped?
Yeah.
Then I better watch my profanity.
Yeah, please.
That's okay, sometimes we.
Heard most have probably got a few.
I just talked to a guy from Anona County this week. He did not receive the letter.
He should have, cause I received one.
But he, he's in Anona County.
We received one.
But he's in the school district, right? So will his tax be affected?
His school tax, uh.
I mean, because he's in Anona County.
Yep, cause that levy rate will be the same if he's, cause the school district extends it.
Across county lines.
Pull whole counties together to, to establish the levy grade. This is going down from nine point nine six to nine point nine zero, same as yours, is what yours should say.
Same as for my school district, I can't man it, the school board sets a levy rate, it's gonna affect Shelby, Crawford and Carroll all the same. Who pays that school board levy?
Okay, now I thought, last year, the state made a mistake. And they over, they made a mistake somewhere, overvaluing or something.
You're talking about the glitch fix, have we?
And they said, well, there'll be a rebate or, there'll be an adjustment for next year. Did you ever hear what that figure was or?
They made us do that adjustment last year and we ain't at a county level.
Yeah, that was last year.
Yeah, so we corrected it in our budget last year and then they never, are not gonna touch it.
So your budget starts July first to June thirtieth, correct? How's this gonna affect your budgeting for your whole county?
We had to charge just on top of that, right? This is what we, this is, these rates are what we deemed is gonna make our county operate for the twenty-four, twenty-five.
But yours is, county budget is basically separate from what the school.
Correct. Correct.
So you're.
But the schools and hospitals added into the overall.
Into what you get.
Property tax that you pay.
Right, yeah. So your current property is only six point three million, is that correct?
That's.
That's the dollars created by the levy.
Yes, that's it. This is for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, this figure, or is this last year's?
Current, current is now, current is the taxes being collected now. Proposed is for the twenty-four, twenty-five. See, proposed all the way to the right.
Yeah, so it'd be go up approximately about four hundred thousand.
Dollars created.
Right. Right, and that's the general portion of the countywide budget. The rural also went almost three, yeah, not quite three thou- three hundred thousand.
Yeah, you're looking at, nevermind, yeah.
That's, and Steve, the overall, overall big budget is closer to twenty.
Well, that's what I was thinking.
But because, part of that is we have federal funds, state funds that come into our secondary roads department that aren't taxed for. We get grant funds for public health that aren't taxed for, but we have to have the expanding authority to use those.
Right, and, no, I guess, I got a question, you're on the school board.
Was, but yep.
Or you, you're not anymore?
Nope, I got off when my kids got out.
Oh, anyway, just, uh, if they want a taxing increase, did they say what it was for? For, for money, the school?
Yeah, most of, uh.
You know, I don't, they don't tell us that, I mean.
Does it say anything on your sheet?
No, I guess it did.
It does on the bottom there, the reason for tax increases, declining enrollment, now nine students. Uh, valuations are also higher with greater income, therefore the funding is generated at a lower tax rate, so.
I thought the valuations increased.
No, it decreased, the evaluate, the valuations increased, the
The levy.
Tax rate decreased. But they are, they are operating on about a hundred thousand more with lowering the tax rate. Because the valuation went up.
Everybody's valuation went up, I mean, just.
Across the state.
The valuation, yeah, no matter the school board or the county or the city, they all pull the same valuation. That number's a solid number in the tax rates according.
Steve, I like, Paul Hoffman had the example I Farm Bureau of. Basically figure the valuations is like how many bushels of brick you produce of corn and the levy rate is the price you sell it at.
Yeah, pretty much it.
Simple, oh, real simple.
Put it in your language.
Buy, buy cheap, sell high.
We're on the other end of the spectrum, by how I sell cheap.
Yeah, and then this year you had a lot of other new additions and subtractions, because we could only, our valuations might've went up a certain amount, but it backed down and and that kind of affected how we had to go with our levies too. Cause inflation didn't stop just because we had an artificial adjustment to the
Inflation.
Infla- you know, assessments. The House files seven eighteen kind of tied our hands to amount of growth that we could even we kind of, we had to back off our, our, uh, our levy rates. Cause the House filed seven eighteen.
Because we had eight point six percent.
Right. You only allowed so much new growth, so if you have more than that, then they make you lower your levy. My general basic was three point five is the code, that's the max you can levy at. But if we went over eight hundred about that number, eight, we had to back ours actually down below that three point five.
So then, changing the subject or getting off a beaten path, what about the hospital then?
I don't know where they're at, and they're not affected by this law, so.
They can just do whatever they want?
At the voters, really at the voters discretion, yes, I mean, they'll have to have the same public hearing court, it's funded proposal on their budget, but, yeah.
We have no say in the hospital.
I went to one of their meetings.
Their, their tax asking is separate, like the assessor's office has got a separate tax asking. Actually, the state has been toying with the idea of even putting EMA on their own separate tax asking, you know. So I mean, there's, obviously the city's is its own and, and the school, where all, all them are on separate tax asking. But these, just these three are actually monitored closely by the state.
I guess I got one more. Take like Awiva school district. They've got the wind towers over there, more of them. How much does that tax come in?
I would imagine.
I know you guys told me, the worst back, they get a tax abatement or whatever, so, so many years and then they finally start again, but.
No, they change it, so it's definitely not so.
Now, if we were gonna change after twenty years, we would only be getting what they generate and we could be going down, so we kept it the way that it was for twenty years. That they only get thirty percent of the actual value.
Thirty percent of valuation?
So if it's a million dollars, they're only getting taxed at thirty thousand.
To me, that's.
Three hundred.
That's the problem that we, and then we're getting on something here.
Well, I'm just asking.
Why it's capped at thirty percent?
Well, that's an argument of ours too.
Oh, yeah, we thought, cause we were coming up on our.
Especially when they come back and they revamp them, get some outage, it'd be like remodeling your house or and then get, you know, not having to pay that difference.
We were on our twentieth year, so we were gonna change it, but then legislature changed it that it'd have to go off of how much, uh, income they generated and that's a number you can't really get, so we would be shooting a thousand in the book.
You're on the river without an oar, aren't you?
So we kept it where it was.
That's lobbyists that work.
Cause I was all excited, cause we were gonna be able to change it and then.
But to your original. To your original question, Awiva school district would have the ability to capture potentially more money with them increased evaluations in that district.
You know, and then there's like TIF dollars that you can get off the, like you seen up in Ida County where they're putting a lot of new pavement and that's using TIF dollars earned. I don't know, that's, that's not necessarily a, that's borrowing from your future taxes is what it is.
Right, you're pulling ahead to do a project today. An argument for doing is you're doing it at a lower cost because of inflation, what it would cost you ten years down the road.
That makes sense.
Right, and you don't allow some of those other taxing authorities to capture that increased value.
It's the other thing.
It affects your general fund a little bit too.
Lot of moving parts, lot of moving parts.
Well, we answered it.
Good, good question.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for coming in.
Thanks for your time. And your patience.
Cindy, did you have another question?
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve, appreciate you stopping by.
Yep.
I always feel kind of lonely.
Thanks for dinner.
Did you have another question?
You were talking about the declining enrollment, Kyle was about the schools. What is our population for Crawford, for county rural? Are we declining in population as well?
I don't know. I don't know that question, the exact number.
I can get you that Cindy, based on the last census, but I don't have that with me.
Last I looked Cindy, it was pretty even to the city of Dennison, the numbers were, so the total population, just say eighteen thousand for quick math, about nine thousand, well, here again, that's nine thousand outside of the city limits of Dennison. So you gotta take your other nine communities out of that as well, so you maybe another nine, another thousand, yeah, so.
I think we're sixteen eight something.
Right.
I think our last census was about sixteen eight, so.
And at one point.
And I, and I remember looking at it when I first seen the census, but that's been a couple days.
Right, and I ha- I have that report in my office, so I can share that with you.
We were working our back to blue, we were, the population that everybody's always using is seventeen thousand five hundred.
Speculate that the rural.
But it's less than seventeen thousand.
The truly rural is kind of probably stable at a number that probably been there for quite a long time. It's, I think, where we're seeing like the decline enrollment of nine west in the Charter Oak Ute. It's probably out of your communities, such Charter Oak, but, and that number's only off the count of October first of the year. And that number is always fluid, Cindy, being on the school board. You could be up five on September thirtieth, on account that you're down nine, cause the family moved out.
Right, and I understand, that makes sense. My, my point was gonna be, you know, with the school system, you have a declining enrollment. Instead of having taxes go up, you can do some hard choices as far as, um, laying off of a staff member or teacher, combining classes, doing some ways to cut costs. But if the declining population for the county rural is going down, I guess I would like to know what the board is thinking about doing. I guess I would like to know what the board is thinking about doing to cut some costs. And I know, I mean, I've, I've listened to your meetings for the last two years, I know that you're struggling. But I guess long term, what are we looking at to try to cut some things out to, to keep our taxes stable? I, I mean, it's, it's just not, I'm not, not a question I expect an answer for right now, but guys, I guess as a group, we need to know long term. Do we really need roads every mile by mile? I mean, I, I don't know the answer, but I guess the board is kind of where I'm looking to see some leadership and. Know what we're gonna do down the road to stop the taxes from continuing to go up.
Cindy, you just kind of played the other side of that corner, devil's advocate a little bit with you. Part of that, I mean, you know, you talk roads every mile. It goes back to the landowners, whether they're farming it themselves or renting it out. It's value to them and their property, and they're the ones paying that property tax to have those roads. And bridges for the agriculture and the farmers to get the grain off, if they didn't have the roads to do that. Their land might not be as worth as much. Along with what they're, they're saving for rent or, or farming off of it, so you know, there's, there's a give and take there to that. Yeah, I know what you mean, they, you know, there's less residents, but the land and the value of what we're drawing our revenue from. Still based on agricultural basin farming it, you know, you see what I'm saying?
I, I know exactly what you're talking about Dave, that makes sense, that was just one example that came to my head, cause I know, I've been, the budget is big and there's a lot of line items on it. And that was just something that I had read about, um, a week or so ago, and it's like, well, yeah, I guess that's one area we could look. Cause I know a couple of years ago, like you took away, uh, one of the low maintenance roads up by Tider Oak by our, by our farm up there, which was great. It, it didn't have to have maintenance anymore, and it was kind of a, you're looking to the future and saying, why do we really need that road there? And there's probably other level B or C, I can't remember what they're called, D roads, that you're taking out of service, which is great, right there, you're, you're lowering. Um, maintenance cost for the secondary roads department, but that's just, I just was trying to think, um, that was just an example that came to my head. But overall, there's a lot of line items.
There is.
You want me to go? Cindy, some of the other stuff, we actually, we do talk about this a lot, you know, what do we wanna do? We wanna do going forward, I mean, do we shrink the size of secondary roads? We've really covered a lot of this level Bs and took a lot of the snow traps out, which actually reduces the maintenance on them to begin with. And we've, we've, we worked on a lot of that type of things out there, and we've got. The bridges, there's bridges to be worked on yet, but there's a lot of that that's been caught up, so. You know, we may combine like what we call the grade crew and the, and the bridge crew, to where they only work on. So many project, projects for this in a year, and so many projects, so you'd have to have less people at that rate, so. And we don't wanna have to let anybody go, but as people retire, so by, by natural, you know. The natural reduction of the workforce, you, you know, then you got some, some redu-, some redu-, reduced costs there.
Twelve or four, five guys down on secondary roads?
Yeah, yeah, and we're already down some that we haven't replaced, so I mean, there's things that we're doing, and then like. The, uh, going, Paul's been really good at snagging grants, you know, to, to pay for some of the other things, and, and that's really actually helped reduce our tax load. But, I mean, you know, our property tax load locally, obviously grants come out of tax dollars elsewhere.
Exactly, exactly.
But we, we, we have, uh, and, and that's, somebody's gonna get that, so I'd just say Crawford County first in my mind, but. But the, uh, but, you know, there's things that we're actually looking at going forward. You know, but we still wanna improve some roads, and, you know, like you said, there probably could be some. As long as the farmers consent to it, and they don't need to have the field accesses and stuff like that, we'll, we'll close roads like you mentioned.
Thank you.
Thank you Cindy.
I do, I mean, it's an ever-moving deal Cindy, and, uh. Uh, I'm just trying to bring back history, I know back in nineteen fifty-nine, there was a bunch of. Roads that were closed, I talked to Paul about it once, and he, he looked back and there was like. Just, they closed all unnecessary roads at that time. So I mean, some of those drastic things could happen again if need be, uh, you really do a hard. Hard count on some of the roads and, and, and look at it that way, uh. It, it, and there's no one magic. We can't wave a wand and fix it, it's, it's gonna be a combination of a lot of different things, I would imagine to. I know this board and the boards that I've served on, on the past, have always been very vigilant of trying to keep a steady. Uh, tax here, it's nothing that, we, we don't wanna spike it, or, it, it's just. We've always been vigilant, and I, I would imagine that the continuity of this board will continue to always try to be. Very mindful of the taxpayer dollars.
Yes, and I hear you guys, when I'm listening to your meetings, a lot of times you bring up about the taxpayers, I appreciate that.
We really don't wanna have to reduce services, that's, you know, a hard one to, and we don't wanna, uh, let people go, so we really do work on a steady. Just try to stay steady.
We've gotta keep so many maintainer guys, and the, the big thing is, is you gotta keep your winter snowplow force. You know, and then that's where a lot of these other crews came from in the summer, was that kept them busy doing things to the benefit of our, our county. And, uh, you know, you have to have so many motor graders out there taking care of them roads all year long, so I mean. The only, the, the, like you brought up, the one key way to do that is have less road staff to worry about, but still, still, you guys. None of your fields are going away, or at least I.
You know, and we'll have a new engineer, I mean, Paul's done great work of hiring staff to save the county money. We do all our own bridge inspections now, except our trust bridges, which are, that's a whole different deal, but. It was cheaper to hire staff and do them bridge inspections than it was to hire it out, so. That's just another piece of the puzzle that a new engineer might look at and find other ways to do that as well, so.
Well Cindy, a good example of, of that too, just what, what Ty alluded you with the snow removal. When I moved into my grandparents' farm, West Manell, in two thousand and three, they told me. Be prepared to be snowed in for a week, to two weeks at a time, have your generator ready and your fridge full. Today, I think we had to make a pretty good sized blizzard this year, and our guys had everybody dug out within a day and a half.
That's great.
One day.
That's getting rid of them snow traps that helps that a lot, you know, back in the, back in, when Dave was talking about, them snow traps were abundant.
And to go back to the, you know, to cut force and labor and then not have all those guys be able to do that, I mean, you look at. Just our hog facilities, cattle lots, our, our businesses we have, they couldn't operate if they had to be snowed in for a week.
And I'm saying nothing, I'm, I'm really not putting down the secondary roads, I was, that was the only example, because surely our taxes go to more than just secondary roads. There's other line items too, so that's what I was, that, that just came to my head as a first example.
Gravel is not cheap.
I think we, we fill them the least favorites list this year, because we actually, because of the state mandates that came down. We tried to do a tax reset and really clean up our line items, and. You know, sometimes them line items, the, the apartment heads will kind of borrow from one line item to cover another line item throughout the year, and it's perfectly legal for them to do that. However, we wanted to clean that up this year, and that's, you know. If, if we get a good baseline, and then if they do have to have an amendment at some point, then we'll kind of know where they really need to be. So we're, we're, we're trying to just keep better track of your tax dollars, that's our objective.
Say, say Cindy, just for your information, and this is, um, I, I found some stuff from Iowa State University that lists. Uh, Crawford County and percent rural versus percent urban. And, uh, in two thousand, they list fifty-eight percent rural and forty-two percent urban, and in twenty twenty. It's fifty point seven is rural and forty-nine point three urban. I mean, all the way back to nineteen forty, Crawford County was seventy-five point eight percent rural, so you see the trend. What kind of skews that, when I read through the information, is that they list, starting in twenty twenty, you have to be. Under five thousand population counts as rural. Versus before that, it was if you were under twenty-five hundred population, you counted as rural, so even. They're skewing it a little bit, that it's even more, or it's even less people that are actual rural, like you, that live out in the country. That number is getting less and less and less rapidly, I think.
Yeah, that's what I was concerned, not concerned about, but wondering about, cause obviously then we're, we're trying to cover those costs with less people to do it. Thank you Frank, appreciate that.
The, is less people, and really, that's only affecting maybe your schools, because the number of parcels in the county don't change, and they all get taxed.
Oh, that's true too.
So, I mean, the tax dollars are still gonna be generated for the most part, you might lose a. A house that's at a different tax rate or something like that, but the land is not gonna, that parcel's never going anywhere.
I'd say we have a lot more absentee landowners too, than what, what we probably did in nineteen fifty-nine, most of the time, the guys that lived on that ground farmed that ground.
Guaranteed that, definitely.
Well, there is some stable part to that Cindy, with the number of parcels, that's just how they're taxed.
Yeah.
Good questions, okay.
Good, excellent. What else do we have today? Well, okay, we're good, all right, so what do we do from here?
This whole meeting was a public.
So closing the meetings is a public, all right, so we didn't, I didn't mean close, I meant public.
All right.
Use password was in the middle of a.
Right, we can check.
This one statutorily had to be all on its own, that's exactly.
And I remember that, I just, okay.
All right.
So no more, uh, questions or?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Alright.
All right, you can spend adjourned, good discussion, man, there's a lot to do that.
That's the most discussion I've had for.
Yeah, and the, the tax, it, it's just a complicated.
But Zoom brings more people in.
I love it.
I mean, they don't always show up on Zoom, but there's more people.
They're, they're watching it, uh, when they get home from work, which is.
That's good.
I love it, keep that proclamation in there.
Yes, I got, I pulled it out, I pulled it out. To make sure.
Will be another.
Wasn't stripping around for it after that.
For what, this future budget?
Right, cause this is your budget hearing.
Right, this is, this.
Just a public hearing.
This is a public hearing.
Proposed tax area.
Proposed tax.
So there'll be another opportunity for somebody to come in here and throw down.
And that's, but I, I'm, I just wondered why people didn't get their, their mail. You know, it was all sent.
Charter Oak might be, cause we don't, of course, you got yours, but we ain't got a, our, our post office could be interrupted for a little bit yet. And all that has much to do with it?
They got the boxes up.
Yeah, they're sitting across the street.
But like, this, you gotta know the mail too, I mean, some people get their mail once a week. I have to use a prime example of that, he goes down to his post office box like once a week and gets his mail. He says, it's all junk mail and bills, he says.
Is this?